Welcome, everybody, to the zoning board of appeals Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. My name is Brian Redell. I'll be acting as chair tonight for our chair who's still out on recovery here from a knee surgery and a horrific cold that everybody has these days. To my left will be Vice Chair Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Hamill, and Mr. Chen. To my right, Ms. Noonan, our clerk, and to my rear, Chair of Directional...
What's that?
Yeah, Chair of Directional...
You can't call you that yet, right?
Acting Director of Inspection Services, Mr. Conlon. If I could ask everybody just to keep your phones on silent, we'll try and get through as much of this as tonight as we possibly can. Just in the interest of time, we do have one case moving, so we'll call that first. Oh, yeah, and then we also only have four members tonight, so you can still be heard. You have to get all four of us to vote in favor in order for it to be approved. You'll have the ability to push to another later date if you'd like to or have us here tonight. But again, you need all four members in order for us to approve whatever you're petitioning. New business case STR 22-12 Zhang Lao for a variance to operate a short-term rental on the premise number 33, 35 High Street Quincy. They've asked for a continuance. Can we make a motion to... what was that, the 24th? To move that for 124?
Mr. Chairman, regarding cases STR 22-12, Zhang Lao for a variance to operate a short-term rental on premises number 33 to 35 High Street Quincy, I make a motion to continue until January 1st, January 24, 2023.
Second.
All in favor? All right, closed, so moved. Old business ZBA 21-101 C P L D Street LLC for a variance to construct a three-story, eight-unit multifamily structure with incorporated parking on the premise number 201 Copeland Street Quincy. Is the applicant or their representative here? How are you? Just a reminder, as I said, we only have four members. You want to move forward?
Yes.
Okay. Four is yours.
Thank you very...
She's an attorney on the floor, right?
Yes.
Counselor, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kathleen Hyer. I'm Pierce Atwood, and I represent CPO of the ST LLC. We originally filed our application quite a while ago, but had been requesting continuances as we went through the process with the planning board. That process recently ended up with a fairly substantial redesign of our project, and we did submit updated plans and updated materials. I have hard copies if anybody needs them.
We take them, please.
Yes.
I got them all.
You?
I got them all. Good. One more?
All right, John's coming in my lap.
All right, so we had originally proposed a larger single structure with additional residential units. We have reduced the project down to two two-family residential buildings with garages. The location of the site is on Copeland Street. It is a relatively narrow lot. It's pre-existing non-conforming as to the frontage, but with 55 feet where 75 feet is required. As a result of the narrowness of the lot and given the setbacks and the zoning bylaw, it is practically speaking almost impossible to design anything that actually fully complies with the zoning bylaw and to put it on this property. The proposed multifamily use is permitted by rate in the zoning district. We meet the parking requirements. We meet the minimum lot size, and we are requesting relief with respect to the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, the maximum floor-to-area ratio, and the side yard minimum depth on the right-hand side of the project. The right-hand, the property to the east or the right-hand side of the project is a condominium building. Their parking area abuts the... their westerly are easterly bound, so there is still a fair amount of space between the structures we're proposing and the abutting structure. To the west of the property is a 10-foot-wide private way, which provides access to a number of homes to the rear. We are not proposing to use that way at all. It will... you will actually have a physical barrier to prevent people from crossing from the way onto the proposed development's property. The required side yard is 15 feet. As I said, we're asking for a reduction on the right-hand side to five feet. That's to accommodate the driveway and parking area, which is on the left-hand side of the property, which is 25 feet. That's being proposed to meet the planning board's access, parking, turnaround requirements. We are before the planning board tomorrow night and hope to have a positive response from them on this, given the major changes that we have made since we were last before the board. If the board has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll briefly turn the floor over to our architect, Tim Johnson, to walk you through the actual design.
Original proposal was eight units, is that correct? Is that what it was?
I believe originally it was 16, and then we reduced it to eight, and now we're...
Now we're down to four, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect. That's all I...
Is that... can I ask, is that what the planning board directed you to?
Yes.
Come down to this one?
Yes, they did.
And the second question I have is, no part of that 10-foot right-of-way is on the property?
So right now, there's a little bit of pavement that currently comes off the right-of-way onto our property, but the right-of-way itself is not actually on our property.
Thank you. No questions.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Kathleen. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As Kathy mentioned, this is a very narrow lot. It's 23 acre on Copeland Street near the intersection of Furnessburg Parkway. There is an existing structure there, which is structurally unsound, which we will be demolishing, and erecting two two-family structures. These would be three-story buildings, which are allowed in the zoning sub-district. Two two-family dwellings. Each dwelling will have a garage, a balcony, also 1,786 square feet, and there'll be some on-ramp parking for the project also. We do not need relief for parking. There is non-spaces required. We are providing non-spaces. The existing site shown off Copeland Street is here, this lappitated building on the left side of that lappitated building is a 10-foot right-of-way for the three properties on the west side of the site. So the site plan, we're proposing to enter the site on the west southwest corner of the site. It's a 24-foot-wide curb cut. The driveway will vary in width from 24 down to 22. We're also proposing a fence, a small retaining wall and fence along the westerly properly line to separate the project from the 10-foot private way. The civil engineer will go over the infiltration systems, which are located under the driveway. These buildings will be, as I said, two families. They will not be sprinkled. They are detached two-family dwellings. They will be built to the stretch energy code, which is 20% more energy efficient than the current code. We're still tweaking the architecture, but we're looking at breaking down the massing with bay windows, shifting the volumes, using perhaps different materials for each mass, divided lights. So if there are no questions on the architecture, I can give it right over to the civil engineer to give a quick presentation.
Members of the board, Carlos Sculpey with Civil and Environment Consultants, the civil engineer in the project. I'll keep it brief. So ultimately, as Tim had mentioned, the proposal's been through significant review with the planning board. We're in front of you today with a much more scaled-down version of the original proposal, which has now been reduced to just the two individual buildings on the property. The five-yard setback that we were talking about here is along the easterly property line. There's an existing retaining wall along that side. We're maintaining that retaining wall as-is and maintaining the existing grade along the back. And essentially, what we're doing is these buildings will be at a slightly lower elevation than the adjacent property here, so the effective height from the condominium property will be about seven or eight feet lower than it is on their grade. As mentioned earlier, the site does slope down towards the rear of the property, so there will be a retaining wall along this side of the property, which will be about three, four feet high at the highest point in the back of the property. So working as best as we can with the natural topography, introducing landscaping along the frontage, as well as in the rear of the property, taking advantage of the natural topography there and maintaining as much natural landscape as we can. As mentioned earlier, parking within the buildings, we have three exterior parking spaces in the rear, two in the middle, meeting the zoning requirement. It's also providing guest parking as well in these units. The design was viewed for conformance with sightlines on Copeland Street with the prevailing speed limit relative to the existing home that's there today. It's really a negligible increase in the overall traffic for four units versus the existing multifamily homes that's there today. So from the traffic standpoint, that was reviewed for the larger project as part of the planning review by a third-party peer review engineer. So all the design that you see in front of you here incorporates all the comments that were applicable to the larger project, which is still applicable to a lesser degree to this project as well as safe sightlines for the speed limit out on the street. We're maintaining landscaping and clearance for the particular fence there to provide those safe sightlines at the egress. Uniformly, we have a 22-foot-wide drive aisle and minimal for development of this nature. That's more than enough to be able to provide safe egress and access for two-way traffic as well as for turning in and out of the parking spaces. And the design of the stormwater management system, again, previously reviewed by a third-party peer review engineer. We also received comments on this proposal in front of us here today from the third-party peer review that the planning board engaged. Really minimal comments on that standpoint, just some minor things that get fixed with clerical coordination through the planning board in the final review. The utilities, there's all existing utilities in Copeland Street as well, so taking advantage and connecting with primarily utility services in the project. Very high-level review. So with that, I'll turn it over. If there's any questions or comments.
One question. You said the wall at the rear of the project, did they extend it?
There's an existing retaining wall along the easterly side of the property that wraps around the back here, leaving that as-is. We are introducing a new retaining wall along the westerly side here, just because the natural grade does slope down. And part of the goals of what we really heard through the planning board review process is that there's existing stormwater that currently comes off the site, but essentially she pours from east and west, and then there's just kind of natural depressions down there. So one of the goals in the directives that we got through that peer review process was to capture as much of that stormwater as we can. So what we've done is we've installed catch basins along the edge here, and all the stormwater runoff, 100% of the stormwater runoff from our site is captured and recharged through the sub-surface infiltration systems that we have under the pavement. So there is no runoff leaving the site at all going to the rear portion of that property, even including the 100-year storm event. So 100% of runoff is captured, contained, and infiltrated into the ground, and none of it leaves the site. So it's a significant improvement from that standpoint.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamill, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Carlos. So as I said before, we're asking for the three variances from the dimensional requirements set forth in Table 4.1 and Section 4.3.6 or 4.6.3, I believe, of the zoning bylaw to accommodate this development. The reduced size of the proposal and the reconfiguration after working through the planning department process has resulted in us requiring fewer variances for this particular project than the one we originally requested. And we think, given the extremely narrow and but long nature of the site, as well as, as Carlos said, the existing sulking topography in the back and the fact that we are fixing essentially a stormwater flooding issue in the back that, in a variance is appropriate in the circumstances. As I said at the start, given the dimensional requirements in the bylaw, practically speaking, it is almost impossible to build anything without a variance, and we believe that meets the hardship requirement as set forth in the bylaws test for the grant of the variance.
Thank you. Could I ask you, if anyone's going to speak tonight, not just on this case, if you could just rise and stand and take an oath? Again, if anyone's going to speak tonight, not just on this case, at any point tonight, and needed to take an oath?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter at our hearing?
Yes. Thank you. All right, backs of the matter at hand. Anyone who want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, close. Get up here, John. Get up here.
John Rutherford, 62 Grand Mall Road. I just want to thank, the first project was way too big. I do want to give some credit to the developer for making this smaller. So this is definitely a better proposal than the last proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Based on the review of the revised plans, 8/31/2022, all the outstanding comments provided on August 1st have been adequately addressed with the following exception: grading and drainage. Six, as a condition of approval, the foundation system of the building shall be designed by a professional structural engineer or geotechnical engineer and submit for review. The design should show stormwater management system will function properly and will not negatively impact the stability of the building. Opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call. Opposed or undecided, please come up?
Undecided.
Yeah, you can come on up.
I don't really want to.
You gotta get your own record, though. You could just say your name and just give your questions to us, and we could filter them through.
So my name is Marlene. I'm one of the...
Marlene what?
Carmelo.
From address, please.
Common Street.
Number?
261.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'm undecided. I just think that the area itself has a lot of redevelopment going on. There's three houses that are still just sort of going to be left in the lurch with this development and the other one on the Copeland-Furnessburg area. My concern is size and traffic, of course, but just where is the entrance in and out for this?
Right on...
Right on Copeland Street. Right where it is today.
Right where it is today, like, yeah, almost existing where the driveway is today.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just concerned with the overall redevelopment of the area itself and just not a neighborhood anymore and just really building up into a lot of apartments and transients and traffic. That's it.
I appreciate your comments.
Sure.
Hi, Chi Chuen-Yong from 82 Santa Street.
Thank you.
I'm undecided. The reason I'm... I just have questions regarding the property may I address. So for...
You can address them to us.
Okay.
We can address them.
From my understanding, the house currently is a single family. I took pictures on my way.
Yes.
This is the existing property right now.
I believe it's a two.
Huh?
I believe it's a two.
That's a two-family?
Yeah.
But it's a very small house and very narrow street. And from my understanding, that narrow street also has access to another building in the back.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's a 200 feet Copeland, which is belonging to another owners currently living with...
Right away there.
Yeah. And from my... Well, there was also another discuss... another project that was under discussing in the directly right next to it.
That'll be right next to it.
I was just wondering, for the water drainage problem, that would that have anything happened to it? Because that whole land in the back is a slope.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they were working each other to make sure...
So their drainage issues are being addressed, or, you know, that's where their site water plans are. You can see them, and if the engineer can show, they're capturing all their drainage right on the property.
Overall, I think just real narrow street for... I'm happy... I'm very happy you guys be dealing with the size to your phone, 62.4, but I just still don't know if that is still too big for the... for the... for the size. It's very narrow, and I agree that that house did to be gone because it just looks so ugly on the street, but I'm just not sure if this is too big or too small. Yeah.
Here are your comments.
My name is James Devine. I live at 117 Cross Street, not too far away and definitely downhill. I heard a comment saying that it'll catch the rainwater and to not damage the structure.
That's the DPW's comments.
Okay. Because, you know, as long as it catches the rainwater so it doesn't shed further on, that would be great. There's more than a dozen trees that are going to be removed. So I don't know if that's brought into consideration, but how fast it leaches out. I also heard people saying that, you know, they're commending them because they've come down so far from where they started. I think it was an insult, the way they started. We have really good zoning laws already set up. None of... I don't think any of the laws changed since they bought the property. The size of the property didn't change. So I don't like hearing that we're having hardship because we need to do this. Nothing changed. There's nothing... Anybody that came in with a normal sense of mind would understand what they would normally be put in here. So it does look better. It looks much better. I looked at the renderings, and it's great how when they draw renderings, they don't show the other structures in the area. They show as though you're going to see this big driveway come across, and there's no other structures. It is better. I think the four units fits well here. Next door, there's even more of them that were built before. So I guess I'm kind of more undecided. I think this looks better. It looks... I think there's been a lot of effort. I will give them that. But I just hope that people going forward pay attention and that we're still looking to make sure that we're catching all the rainwater because we have intentions to build more units down the street, and it's... We have huge issues, and we have not had our new pump station that we've been talked about to go in. I know when that goes in, it'll help, but it still hasn't broke around. We've only had plans drawn on it, and that's it. And I also noticed, they're also across the street from the fire department, three stories, no sprinklers, and we still don't have a fire truck over there with the ladder.
Don't need sprinklers.
No, I know. No, it's fine. I know it's not required, but...
No, no, because it's two units. It's not four total.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's because they split the building, maybe. I don't know. But anyways, I know it's not required, but it's also right next door. We still don't have a ladder truck, too. So I'm actually more undecided because I think it looks good now. Thank you.
Opposed or undecided? Second call, third call. Counselor, do you want to say anything? Call that part of the hearing closed?
No, again, you're gonna... They're gonna make... have to make it a little bit bigger to make their investment work. And they seem to have taken care of the major issues with the water, defining the private way is a liability issue, but I'm good with it. It's a huge improvement from the original proposal, defining that leaving the walls where they are for water retention, the destination between the private way and their property.
I agree. You've been asking to do what I've been asked to do. Been at this for a while now. I think it's a big compromise, and it should improve that location.
Plus, I have to go back to plan.
Yeah, they're planning tomorrow. Yeah.
If there's anything...
If there's any changes, yeah, they'll come back to us.
Right.
Want to make a motion?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, regarding case ZBA 21-101, Copeland Street LLC for a variance to construct a three-story, eight-unit...
No, not the four.
Four units, multifamily structures with incorporated parking on the premises number 201 Copeland Street Quincy. I make a motion to grant the requested variance.
Opposed in favor? All right. Those opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I didn't read your name. Yeah, and that's a... That's a... I'm going to look up the old case. Hold up the old case from... So we have the approval on it. ZBA 2283 Peter Bartas for a variance to renovate and expand the existing two-and-a-half-story single-family home and add lofted living space above the existing one-story garage on the premises numbered 11 Bayberry Road. Is the applicant or their representative here? How are you?
Good. How are you?
Come on up. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Tali Nishtra. I live at 101 Humpings at 130 Federal Street in Austin.
Okay.
I'm here on behalf of my partner, Peter Bartas, and the former herb and whistle. I do have a PowerPoint if you'd like me to present that, or I can just talk to your hard copies.
Yeah, so just before you even get in there, we can walk through the hard copies. So we passed this before?
Yes, it was approved last year as designed.
With no existing... with no living space ability above on the garage.
Right, and there is currently no proposed living space in the garage.
Okay, yeah, that's what we just had a question because it looked like it was like just the old application. So we were just making sure that was... You were just trying to reaffirm the case from before. Are there any other changes to the case?
There's no changes whatsoever.
Okay. You guys want to go through highlights? I mean, we approved it.
Yeah, no, I'm good. I recall.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. That's just make sure that we put our same restrictions we did previously.
Yeah, so Marty's going to pull it up for us. I'm sorry. I've been here for like a minute, and I've already taken over for Marty in Colvaes. I mean, are you comfortable with that? If we just kind of reaffirm the past case? Are you trying to change anything? No, you're just trying to get the extension because construction hasn't started. I just want to make sure we just read it.
We did put restrictions on that, on the rooms over the garage.
No water?
Correct. Yeah, it's just storage, no water, no plumbing. Correct. And that's completely fine.
Decision variance granted when the permit granting authorities...
That all construction beings standard.
There shall be no plumbing or occupancy in the garage. So as long as we just reaffirm the case with that, you guys comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just take some testimony just in case if anybody has... is here for us. Other than that, if you have nothing to add, it's the exact same. I'm good. Okay. All right. Does anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, close. No notes. I'm guessing, yeah, nothing's changed. Opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call, second call, third call, close. Yeah, so as long as we just reaffirm that with the no living space, you guys are good?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case ZBA 22-83 Peter Bartas for a variance to renovate and expand the existing two-and-a-half-story single-family home and add a... And expand the existing two and a half story single family home and add a loft with no, with no living space. Above.
No plumbing.
Plumbing, above the existing one-story detached garage near premises number eleven Bayberry Grove Quincy. I make a motion to grant the requested bearing. Second.
Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. That was easy.
Thank you all.
He was welcome. I thought we were the entertainment tonight. Z B A twenty-two eighty-eight Arthur Chu for a variance to build a rear deck on the premise number two ninety-four Rock Island Road. Quincy is the applicant or their representative here. Think it's wrote itself.
Oh, not to my fault to go saying?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just confused. As long as yours, sir.
Um, for the record, I'm Arthur Chu. I'm the architect and the owner of this property. Um, this is a family property. I'm a dural property building it as a single-sailed house. Um, it was a single-sailed house. My intent is to uh, we're intent was to do it as a rent project. Um, but the rear deck on the project because of the grade difference is about a call point grade difference. So usually under four point three point three, which is six feet past the foundation into the set bed. But because it's actually a half-story higher than the surrounding rates in the rear, required.
Okay.
So what I did is uh, we applied for an, as the right project without a desk.
Okay.
Rear deck. Um, it's currently under construction. We come before you for the uh rear deck, which we submitted a project. And since um discussing with the city councilor and some of the neighbors, they wish that I would amend that. And I have amended the rear deck so it doesn't go.
Around the house, right?
All the way around the house. So it stops at the bend.
Okay.
Uh, the other questions are, are we retaining the tree on the front of that?
Okay.
And um, you can decide that, which is the second one to be addressed, depending on the way you let me do that. So it's all limited address and not a side deck.
Okay. So down to like two and a half feet or something like that?
Uh, both four, because the door swings.
Okay, yeah, yeah, sure, sorry. Any questions?
No question.
No questions.
You uh.
I'll be lead up.
You want to lead off or yeah, because I know you guys worked on this, so it's up to you.
Tell me.
Uh, Dave McCarthy, uh forty-eight Whitney Road, Ward one. Uh, I had spoken to Jay Duka before. He left about this. Uh, you know, the house was um a blighted property after. And company finally got around to to taking it down. It's gonna turn into a beautiful addition to Rock Island, um to Rock Island Road. Concerns were in um, uh, to both the neighbors on each side, the Sullivan's and the Vitros. And I met with the Vitros more on their side. If you're facing the house there to the right. The issue was the deck coming all the way around to the right side. Uh, that would be elevated and there's a six-foot fence that's uh in in need of repair also. Uh, but um, it's elevated. You can look right into the uh, where they have cookouts. They have a pool. Our privacy would be out the window. Um, Arthur's made some adjustments. I met on Saturday for an hour or so with Mr. Vitro who's sitting right behind me. We went out, took some pictures and and just talked about uh the house itself. I know it's in there by right. Um, I know it um needs a little tweaking in regards to the zoning board. But I think um Arthur's made the moves now of the deck. Um, we were hoping he was gonna keep that tree. That's another privacy thing. It's a big maple. Uh, so it really, uh, when it blooms, it it gives a little uh shade and a little uh more privacy. But removing that deck on that side was was the key uh in regards to their privacy there. Um, other than that, I think it's a, it's a nice house. And I think it's uh, um, you know, was way overdue to go in and I I I I think with these changes um. Uh, we we should be fine. So uh unless you folks see something or or the neighbors see something that I uh didn't see. I think we're uh we're almost there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone want to speak in favor? First call? Sure. Sure. And you're to the left, just to be sure. Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you.
Steve Vitro, uh three oh two Rock Island Road. Um, thank you. Appreciate the the uh the revised plans with the decking. Um, I mean, Dave kind of nailed it with exactly. It was just a little imposing over our side. Um, but house looks beautiful and more than happy to be in favor of it with those uh concessions moved. Thanks.
Last call?
Can I jump back up for a second?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, Teddy and Nancy Millow, they're longtime residents in that on Hood Street. Um, they've been in the neighborhood forever. They just pointed out to, and this is something I I I I was unaware of. But there's a fence that's at the bottom of a right away that separates the Sullivan property to the Chu property. Um, there's a fence that looks like it extends past the end of the Chu property. Down to the, down to the water that probably maybe been there forever, but might want to be removed in regards to beach access. I don't know if Arthur, if you want to talk to this or even know about that. Uh, but if that's something that that doesn't belong to the the um, the Chu property. I'd like the board to look at that, uh just to see if that uh fence needs to come out.
It's not a private, it's not, not a private extension. It's just a land past that. Okay.
So what are we saying? Coming off the seawall?
Yeah, so he just put the whole plant in. It's fine. It's all Washington.
It's a wooden fence.
It's a wooden fence? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's probably what it is. It's probably on the right away.
The beach right there.
Yeah, the beach right away. It's probably what, do you think it's on his, it was probably on the beach right away, right?
It's not on his property. Yeah, it's all of it. It's on the right away.
Hmm.
Well, I'm after ours. Um, this fence goes down to the seawall and the seawall is, I understand, a state property. But the water line is behind the seawall and there's like, there's footage there behind the wall. And this right away is used very much so. And you have to go down to the rocks and stuff in order to go around there. So it, the fence should come down. The fence is not on private property.
But yeah, but it can't through if it's his. It's not his.
It's on beach.
It'd be the same. It's the right away. I'm what I'm, we're discussing it, so if it's not his, he might not have the right to remove it.
No, we can look, I can look at it with Rob too.
Okay, we'll just make a note of it.
This right away is used by a lot of people around in that area. People of Rock Island Head have beach rides.
Right, but again, they, we prefer to have the city make the determination to take out the proposed to have him do it. Because he'd have liability issues, somebody isn't his.
Who have liabilities on the uh fourth avenue?
City of Quincy?
I think, City of Quincy?
Yeah.
They actually don't, yeah.
Paper Street. You guys got a lot of them down there.
Anyways, this.
So they they have technically, they could, they have.
Like this corrected.
Yeah, they have use rights technically, you know, the the adjacent neighbors have use rights of the road and and make.
And all Rock Island Head has beach.
Yeah, no, but exactly. So it it's, if it's not his property, we can't request them to remove it. So we'll have the city make a det.
But this, it's an extension of the fence that goes down the right away. So it actually.
It could have, yeah.
Make any difference.
Yeah, I mean, so like the, looks like the fence according to our line is not on his property at all. So we'll have the city go down.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you. Last call? Call that part of the hearing closed. Any correspondence? No? I don't know why these were, these must be for your original case. I know, but that's, they were making it off there. Off. That's all right. Well, I mean, we've reviewed this middle for the above-mentioned project and our commentary as follows. Install two drywells to handle the additional flow from the new roof. Upon completion of the project, as bill plan showing all utilities and building footprint should be submitted along with a digital file. Guessing that's because of the original building permit. Were those from the original building permit?
Um, they came up because they reviewed it and we we submitted drywall.
Okay, okay. Okay, yeah, I mean, that's for the DPW conditions anyways. They'll have to do that to issue everything. Um, opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. I'll be in favor with the changes. So just when you read it off, it's just the rear decks.
From the side access, right, four foot side access is that what you want?
Four.
For the right side access, because you're still gonna have uh the right side maximum four.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we got in case Z B A twenty-two dash eighty-eight, I thought you were preparing to build a red deck on the premises with four foot access on the right-hand side. Number two ninety-four Rock Island Road Quincy make a motion to grant the requested bearing.
Second. Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. Thank you guys for working that out. Appreciate that. Okay. Z B A twenty-two ninety-two Paul Bishop for a special permit to continue to operate a large family childcare on the premise numbered seventy-three Willard Street. Is the applicant or their representative here?
Paul Bishop seventy-three Willard Street and my wife.
Give us a second. Let them, we'll let them get out of here. Fire away, sir.
Uh, Paul Bishop seventy-three Willard Street. My wife, Paul Bishop seventy-three Willard. Um, we've been licensed through E E C for over twenty-plus years. Running a large family childcare and my wife is renewing the license expires the end of December. So our licenser from E E C sent me a a notice saying, um, I just spent a term. You have to have a special permit. So Kitty, Miss Zane, we've been doing this for over twenty years. So here we are today saying we've been operating on the corner. It's a corner house. Jack McDonald, Dr. Clark and Kathy Cairo Cracker Clark and Christine Christine, they uh, they spot. And I contacted Brian Palmucci, who led me to Nina, and she heard my whole story and Emma Holley came. And said, I don't know why you guys are there. You've been there for twenty-five years.
It must be something new because you're about the.
Yeah.
One we've seen in the last couple of months. It's not some new requirement, but there, it's something we're checking on, so.
Yeah.
It, you're you're not alone. We've seen it a bunch of times. So we apologize for the inconvenience.
No worries, no worries.
So so just give us, so you you see how many kids today? Ten?
Up to ten. We're licensed up to ten.
Okay. And and any past issues, any past issues with neighbors never for the.
No, Bob and Kathy are my only neighbors next to me, the street in the common parking lot, so we're we're in the ideal spot.
Okay, good.
Any questions from the board?
You guys can have a seat.
Okay, and will we get an actual permit so we can give to the E E C licenser?
So how does that, how do we work on these things?
On the side, we'll have, we'll have the, you know, the decision that we can get you right, you know, as fast as possible so you can give to the licenser, so.
Okay, awesome, because it expires the end of December and I'll call her or email her saying we got approved. It's just.
Yeah, so yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll touch base after and.
Awesome, so we're set to go?
You can sit down for now. We just got, we still have to go through the process. That's all right. Well, you know, if we have any more questions, don't worry. Most people don't come up here much, so don't feel bad. Anyone want to speak in favor? Please come on up.
Well, Clark, sixty-nine Willard Street right next door, the great neighbors. They've been, uh, we've been there for twenty-four years and they've been running this over twenty-five years. Just curious, why is the city doing this now?
So it's been a requirement the whole time. It's just, I think we're kind of all just getting on the same page and 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 communicating effectively with the state. So it's just, like I said, this is.
State is very stringent on 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 running daycares and they, they're the client, they, they, as far as my knowledge.
Well, they are. Yeah, I mean, they are. You have to recertify annually, but there's never been like the the work with the with municipalities. So it's just, it's just making sure that it's on record to like, to run as a business because you're.
Kind of a hassle for these guys.
I I I, if I could change it, I could, I would, but it, and it's not our requirement. So we just, we were here to just make sure that it's, you know, that there's no neighbor.
Glad to hear every other uh one, everybody else is doing it too. They're not just these guys.
It's not, it's not just them. We're not, nobody's getting singled out. So like I said, this is the, this is, I mean, we.
Probably the fourth in the last two months.
Yeah, I mean, we've seen.
Get to see these guys work day to day and they do an awesome job. Uh, so couldn't say enough good things about.
Unfortunately, Mr. Clark, like you know how government works, sometimes things get lost in the shuffle and then they get found and and then, you know, we try to make everybody, you know. Do the same thing once we do. Appreciate you coming up.
Senator Clark, I did exactly what Bob said.
Your address to Miss.
Uh, sixty-nine Willard Street and we're just great neighbors, great daycare providers. We're glad they're there.
Thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak in favor?
And that you guys have been shocked. You're in favor of this tonight, so I wrote a letter into it.
Being recorded.
This is, this is a great business in Quincy. He's been doing a great job, um, just a a great family business and I I just want to be on record in support of that. I know it's difficult. I've seen many of them come up here and I know it's, the state is catching up with it. It's difficult for these small businesses to do this. It causes a lot of anxiety for them too because it's licensed, um, but they've done all the right things. And when he got in touch with me, I said, I just knew this was meant to someone that hopefully would be no problem here. So thank you very much.
You know, I agree, you know, that's the hardest part is like, you don't know if you're gonna have a home or something like that to go to a few weeks or three weeks.
Yeah, you're a parent.
As a parent, that's super nerve-wracking of a four and six-year-old, so I understand.
So I want to thank you very much and this is truly the the reason why I'm here tonight. So thank you very much.
Do you mind if I not read your, or do you want me to? Thank you. Anyone else? All right, uh, just a couple of letters. They're both in support, it looks like, right? Three letters in support. Uh, this is from Mike and Kim Healy, forty-four Stedman Street. Um, just writing to support. Our daughter Grace was cared for at the Bishop's Daycare when she was an infant toddler for many years. Great experience, nothing but great things to say. Excellent example of a daycare in our city. Um, lastly, they're also near neighbors of ours. We didn't know the Bishop's prior to my daughter being born fourteen years ago. They've been, we've been in our home now for twenty years. Prior to that timeframe, we've also never had an issue or concern with them and also never heard an issue with the daycare. Um, this is the Clarks. They already here. I'm not gonna read it in. Um, and then uh Greg and John McDonald from ninety-seven Willard Street. Owners of the Common Market, wonderful neighbors that operate this large family daycare. Involved operators, we see children dropped off and picked up, everyone speaks very positively about their operation. Bishop's explained to me that after twenty years, they now need a permit to operate this large family childcare. I understand that there's no changes to the schedule on the property and they've been licensed for twenty years, fully support them in acquiring this permit, please feel free to call us with any questions. Opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case ZBA twenty-two dash ninety-four Brian Burke for variance.
Nope, next one, sorry, twenty-two ninety-two.
Twenty-two ninety-two Paul Bishop for a special permit to continue to operate a large family daycare childcare on the premises number seventy-three Willard Street in Quincy, I make a motion to grant the requested special permit.
Second.
Calls in favor? Aye, opposed, so moved. So contact. Kathy, she already emailed, you can send her an email and she'll be able to get you what you need.
Okay, great, thank you guys.
Best of luck, thank you guys for caring for the children of Quincy. Because I don't want to. ZBA twenty-two ninety-four Brian Burke for a variance to add a room to the face of the building, reusing the existing entry and windows on the premise number six ninety-four Washington Street, is the applicant or the representative here?
Hi, good evening, my name's Timothy Burke, I'm the architect for the project.
Mr. Burke, just to remind you, we only have four members, so good to go forward.
Yes, we are, yes.
Thank you.
I have a business address of one forty-two Berkeley Street in Boston.
Thank you.
And this is an existing building on an irregular shaped lot, so that's why we're here for seeking relief for the side yard setback. The owner, Brian Burke, is here with me. We're looking to extend the front of the building by fifteen foot eight inches towards the circle and to create more usable space for, the plan is to have an electrician's office there, not for sales or anything, but for his business as an electrician. There'd be no increase in the impermeable area on the site and Brian has met with the neighbors and has their support for this project, we feel it's a great project for a small business in Quincy and, and just due to the irregular shape of the lot, that originally it was a regular lot, but it was, part of it was taken when they built the rotary.
Same width of the existing structure, are you coming out like they, like with the lot, so you're?
Yeah, it'll be a additional five hundred and seventy-eight square feet total, yes.
So you're coming out the.
Towards, towards the circle, it's an odd, it's an odd shaped lot, yeah.
How far are you coming out?
Fifteen foot eight inches, but that will leave sufficient room for a couple of vehicles out front for his.
I was going to say, how, are you changing any parking or just?
No, there's two existing curb cuts that will remain.
Yeah, but it's. I mean, it's a little bit, yeah.
If you're aware of this, are you aware of this, the issue with the sign?
Pardon?
Issue with the structure of the sign?
Uh, the thing that's up above?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's coming down.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would bring our attention.
Oh, okay.
How would be a condition of the.
That's fine with us, it's, it's falling apart anyway, yes, yeah.
Yes, we saw originally, we saw the sign for a new sign. We're not going to have to put that on the ground, this one down.
If I remember correctly, right?
And then they couldn't, they couldn't build it for the new area.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay. Can have a seat, sir. Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. Any notes besides the one from, all right, so I'm just going to read it in a record, you know. It's from our director, Mr. Duca, no opinion on the matter other than to say if relief is granted, kindly please consider the following conditions to address the longstanding violations regarding the abandoned steel sign structure that encompasses the building that was supposed to be removed as a result of an earlier appeal of my order by the owner of this board, to this board. Opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it, as long as the condition of the sign comes down, you're not changing any parking, you're making more usable building, you know, nobody's going to use a three hundred square foot office building at this point.
It'll dress up there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, people can get high and go look at a new building.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case twenty-two dash ninety-four Brian Burke for variance to add a room to the face of the building, reusing the existing entry and the windows on the premises number six ninety-four Washington Street Quincy, I make a motion to grant the requested variance subject to the signed structure being removed as part of this project.
Second.
Calls in favor? Aye. Calls in favor?
All right.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Okay. ZBA twenty-two ninety-seven Lam Nguyen for a variance to elevate the home, making it three stories to meet the flood plain requirements and modify the driveway garage on the premise number zero Franklin Ave is the applicant or the representative here.
Go ahead, you always name an address for the record.
The chairman and board members, my name is Lam Nguyen, owner of Zero Franklin Ave Quincy, seeking for variance for to build three-story single family for three tandem parking with two car park in the garage and one car park up front of the driveway, ground level has a two tandem parking space in the garage and a storage area. First floor level will be kitchens, living and half bath. Second floor level will be four bedrooms, two full bath, maximum height is less than thirty-five feet. Approved special permit ZBA twenty-two dash forty-eight and approved order of conditions from conservation commissions in a flood zone has been issued. Attorney William Philans who did the special permit on the property August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two has missed filings for variance for three-story single family home. And. Family with a four bedrooms, two and a half bath, twenty-six hundred square feet living space with three parking space tandems under the house in the residence A district zoning. Ground level will be one parking at the driveway and two parking tandem in the garage. We must raise the first floor above the flood zone level for the home, might to be three levels and front deck is less than twenty-five feet of the front line. We are seeking a variance to relieve as well the irregular shape of the lot. Also, opposed to have some clean fields bringing to the side grade, it's a lot lower than the street sidewalk, finish grade will be same level as sidewalk, thank you.
I have a plan for sixty-two Franklin Ave.
It couldn't have a level.
Oh, all right.
What's that?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Any questions?
Well, let me do something. Council of Philan, about the approval.
Yes.
It was in the, where, where's the permit for it? And then he went to conservation.
Correct.
And the conservation commission put an order of conditions.
Yes, correct, everything has been.
What's going to happen is they don't ask for a building permit, they definitely ask to be allowed to build it, is that?
No, 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 the, the, the building height is restricted from in the resident A, it's two and a half stories, so right now we have a parking space under the garage of the house, so if we put the garage under the house was the approved ZBA twenty-two dash forty-eight, which that.
You'd be three stories.
Three story, correct, yes.
But you're not exceeding the height?
No, no, less than that.
Thank you. I've got questions.
No questions? You have any questions? If you can sit down.
So this is for.
Yeah, I mean, that's like, that's a, I mean, it just looks like, it's.
Very similar.
Very similar.
Okay.
I'm going to speak in favor. First call, second call, third call closed. Any correspondence on this one? No correspondence. Opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed, call that part of the hearing closed. I normally hate, you know. Doing something like this, especially in rez A, but, I mean, it looks like this is the best case scenario. You get, you get them out of the flood plain.
It's an outlaw, so it's in the flood plain.
You get two.
Not exceeding thirty-five feet, so.
Yeah.
And I think there's one direct across the street or two that are very similar.
And you get two cars out of the, off the road, you know, so I think, you know, as big as it is. You know, as big as it is, you're getting, you're maximizing every aspect of it, you know? No, and it's a, I mean, it's a, it's a good sized lot. Even for a corner lot, it's still. Okay. All right, want to make a motion, Charles?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, regarding case. Twenty-two dash ninety-seven Lam Nguyen for variance to elevate the home, making it three stories to meet the flood plain requirements and modify the driveway garage on the premises number zero now sixty-two Franklin Avenue Quincy, make a motion to grant the requested variance.
Second.
Calls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Also, thank you. Saved some money too, didn't hire a council of Philan. You said it, John. All right, last case. Right, STR twenty-two dash nine Fang Fang Yi for a special permit to operate a short-term rental on the premise number two eighty-nine Whitwell Street in Quincy, is the applicant or the representative here? How are you?
I'm living two eight nine Whitwell Street. Tonight I come here, first things my English is not very well, I try to give everyone is understand. Before we bought this home, we live in subsidies, housing, subdust housing post, purchase, to reduce the burden of the government to support ourselves, to realize our American dreams with the down payment and loan guarantee from our sector. We bought the home, our plan was to share the extra room with Airbnb guests to help repay the loan. At that time, city of Quincy did not have any law and restriction on short-term rental. Shortly after we purchased the property in twenty nineteen, we start short-term rental via Airbnb. The short-term rental stopped during pandemic and restart this year, we never received any complaints or cause any trouble to the community. We did not allow parties, pets or children under two years old, so we are not affecting anyone in our family. I'm the only one who was the, who was and my income is not high because we have two young children who need to be taken care of, we can afford the baby sister, sixteen. My husband tried to have a job, but his income was not enough to pay the baby sister, so my husband stayed home to take care of my young sons and take care of Airbnb guests to support the family. If we can operate Airbnb, we won't be able to make our mortgage payments, then we will lose our home, which we worked so hard for our American dream will be broken and we will have to go back to live on government subsidies, adding burdens to the city and the state and the community. Applying for all stores of raw income benefits include raw income housing, it will be disaster to us and I hope you don't want to see that early. We operate Airbnb because we need the income. We are good citizen and who don't want to burden the government or the community. We hope to support ourselves and our two young boys through our hard working.
Thank you so much for taking the time to read it, and your English is better than you think.
I try, because my sister support me, yeah.
Good job, you did a good job.
Thank you so much.
How many rooms do you rent?
I.
Want or is it just, is it, yeah, go ahead.
I wanted three rooms because my house, yeah, have the three parking, uh, four parking.
Okay, is your house a single family house?
Yeah, single family.
Five bedrooms, you have? How many bedrooms do you have?
Yeah, five.
Five?
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking up, this is, I think this is confused, it's Resby. Yeah, because it was six of all of you. Yeah, no, there was confusion, I was just trying to see, that's what I looked at.
Yeah, because there's a couple of them.
What's that?
It's already gone through the building department. They've looked for us, no. They didn't work for us, no.
I thought they were reviewing it. No, they review them first to make sure we have, like, because she submitted with all the proper documents, the gas bill to show that, you know, she's a resident and they.
Rob, they do a physical inspection? We'll do that after the.
After we approve.
We just checked, they showed there are no complaints, no violations, there aren't any other surprises.
In a single family where they're residing. What do, can they rent multiple bedrooms, like, under the ordinance, as long as it's to one person, is that what it is?
I don't think I rent to three separate people, actually.
You can, as long as they're residing in there? Okay.
They have to be there, right?
So it's just if we have the, like, if we had a three family, they could only do one of the three units? Okay, I was just making sure of that, okay.
You're a lot further along than I am.
I'm, I'm, we're trying to learn this, this is new for us.
Yeah, yeah, and for us it's the same, same thing.
Yeah, so we're learning about.
Last year they start.
Yeah, so we just started this year, you're, you're the tenth one we've seen, so we're still learning too, so that's why I'm asking questions, okay? Um, have you had any complaints from any neighbors in the past?
No.
Okay, okay, you can have a seat for now. Anybody else have any questions?
Are there any on-street parking that they use or is everything off-street?
One, one more question.
Okay.
How's the parking situation? Parking is, are all the cars parked off the street, off workout, it's the street?
Oh, only my house is for the parking, it's not.
Street parking, it's my house.
All.
Yeah, owner, it's owner.
Yes, they are taking.
How about transportation? Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it comes in there, it's big, it's big in the back too. Okay.
It's only five ten minutes to the train station, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Does anyone want to speak in favor? First call.
Actually got one that's kind of near my neighborhood. John Rutherford sixty-two Grumwell wrote, definitely, you know, residential be, like the applicant said, I mean, this is a way that they pay their property taxes, so you need an extra way to rent it, plus we are building a bunch of apartments right up on Whitwell, it's actually a great Airbnb place, it's like a one second walk to Maliki, so I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Second call, third call closed. Any correspondence, I'm guessing, no? Anyone? Um, anyone opposed or undecided? First call. Second call. Third call closed. I'm in favor of this one. I think this. Make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number twenty-two dash nine, Fang Fang Yi for a special permit to operate a short-term rental on the premises number two eighty-nine Whitwell Street Quincy. I make a motion to grant the requested special permit.
Second.
Calls in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay. All right.
Thank you so much, everyone.
I give it.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Calls in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.